Good evening. Today is Monday, July 9th, 2018. We're here for the Cabarrus County Board of Education Combined Work Session and Business Meeting, as we typically do in the month of July. I'll call the meeting to order. We'd like to initially recognize a deputy, actually you're a police officer at Bogor, right? Or you're a deputy? I say with the outfit changed. Like to recognize the School Resource Officer from Bogor Elementary, Matthew Wilson. Thank you for being here. Okay, Board members, I'll take motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved, second.
So Dr. Kirk made the motion, Mr. Harrison made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's 5-0. Yes, we're missing two board members. I know one is on vacation and I'm not sure where the other is. Hadn't been notified. We have the approval of the minutes for the June 4th work session only tonight with having extra meetings in June and coming off a holiday week, everything was not completed. So any, first, I'll take a motion that we approve the minutes of the June 4th work session.
I'll make the motion that we approve the June 4th work session minutes.
Mr. Walter made the motion, a second.
Second.
And Dr. Kirk made the second. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, Ms. Monroe, I didn't look at the copy now, did you add that one word?
That was on the other.
That was on the other minutes, okay. Okay, that's right. Okay, so all in favor of approving the June 4th minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes 5-0. Now we'll go down to the reports. We have Ms. Klutz to come tell us about the state. I guess it's really a state projected budget, right? Have they approved everything? Is there anything pending?
I believe everything's approved at this point. This is not, I'm not asking you to approve Cabarrus County Schools budget today. Want to share the information from the state and local with the board so that I can prepare it in the formal budget resolution document for August. And so we're just, we're gonna hit the state highlights and we'll also hit the local highlights and answer any questions that you have in preparation for the August meeting. So, sorry, give me one second here. So we'll start with the state budget highlights and certainly the thing that we think about most is our teacher pay. We have, the bachelor schedule has been updated and it starts at $35,000 with no change at the beginning step. The bachelor schedule top of scale for 25 years and above is at $52,000, which is a $700 increase from last year. The increase with the step for bachelor level teachers with less than 25 years of experience ranges from 0 to 6,450, which is anywhere from a 0% increase to a 14.8% increase depending on where you fall on that schedule. This budget continues to hold harmless based on our 2013-14 schedule plus longevity plus that $1,000 bonus at that time, so we compare and look at every teacher's salary to ensure that we'll hold them harmless. Then the next, the bullet is there to the actual link to the pay schedules for 1819. It will include all of the bachelors, the masters, all of the schedules even for the superintendent's pay schedules in there.
Has that already gone out to the teachers?
It is always posted on our website as quickly as we get it. It's posted on the HR website and also on the finance website.
So the paycheck here in July, they'll see that?
Oh, sorry.
Do they see that?
Do they?
Has it been implemented, so the first paycheck in July?
So our teachers don't generally get paid in July. Most of our teachers don't get paid till August and so, yes, the schedules have been updated.
Even the ones on the summer programs?
If they're in the summer programs, they will get paid the higher pay, yes, correct. Because it was effective July the 1st, just most of them don't see a check until August. Yes, and just as a reminder, that final bullet there, only the following teachers and instructional support personnel shall be paid on the master's salary schedule. This refers to 2014, 2015 when the state eliminated the master pay for most of our teachers who weren't grandfathered or already in a program. And so this is just a reminder of where we are on that, the masters' pay. Then we'll talk about teacher bonuses that were included in the state budget this year. They, for veteran teachers, there's a $385, they call it a bonus for teachers of 25 years who did not receive a salary increase. And so if you didn't get a salary increase from last year to this year, we will pay the small $385 bonus. There's also funding for the 4th and 5th grade reading bonus program and the 4th to 8th grade math bonus program and they're made reoccurring. The value has been changed and it was reduced from 20, has been reduced from $2150 to $2,000, so a little bit less to be a consistent amount. Then there was some increases in funds for the AP and IB bonus program, so those are still in place.
Ms. Klutz, can you explain what "made them reoccurring" means?
Made them, okay, so when those bonuses were in for last year, 1718, it was just put in the budget for one year. And so when they, this year, they made them reoccurring so that they will show up in the budget every single year unless someone specifically takes those out. And so we can feel more confident about them staying in the budget.
Okay, is there a link that shows people how they qualify for that and how they don't?
We can certainly send you the qualifications for that.
More so for teachers, how do the teachers know that they qualify for this or they don't qualify for that? Is there a schedule somewhere that says what?
There's requirements, I mean, I'm sure.
That's in the state budget or is that?
The money for it is in the state budget.
The money's in the state budget, but the requirements are where?
The requirements are, I'm sure they're on DPI's website.
Do we put that on our website or can we do that as well?
I do not put them on my website. There's a frequently asked questions about the bonuses where we answer all the questions payroll related. Certainly wouldn't be difficult to.
Put a link or something that says how you qualify for that and how you don't?
Yeah, we could put that in there.
Yeah, I think in that case it's important that we don't interpret anything, just state it as the state says it.
Yeah, I think a link would be okay.
Yeah, yep.
Sometimes the explanation that's only in the law because nobody knew that it was coming until the law explained it, so it can be confusing. And it applies to some grades and not others and so, yeah, we still can put a link and try to put it on there, but it almost always requires some interpretation, that's why.
So if I'm a teacher, how do I know if I qualify for this or not? Who do I talk to or where do I get that?
So we notify the teachers, so once we process the data, we notify the teachers and tell them, you're gonna be receiving this bonus and for this amount of money and it's gonna be in this paycheck. So we do notify them in advance.
But that's after the fact or that's after it's determined?
No, it's before. I mean, it's after they've earned it but before we pay it.
Right.
And the reason for that is kind of tax purposes.
Right, just seems confusing, there should be some easier way to.
Right now, you tell me if I'm wrong, but right now, these are based on growth, so right now, we don't know specifically yet who they have. So again, it can be very confusing, but when we get the growth data, then we kind of point them to that. And sometimes that can depend on how long they've teach it, how long they've taught it, what grade they're in, what grade they're in, that's from an English teacher. So what grade they're in, what grade they taught the year before. It really can be confusing, but when that growth data comes down and principals notify, we kind of send out notifications. So again, what you're asking is more than reasonable, it's just more confusing than it should be, so we kind of roll that out.
It really is, I mean, then there's, you know, whether they're on leave for partial, part of the year, whether, you know, there's a lot of.
It sounds very complicated and it's hard if I was a teacher, I wouldn't know how to figure out if I get the bonus or what I get.
It is, and we feel like, you know, notifying the teacher before we put it in their paycheck is a good thing, you know, they can adjust for taxes and they are notified that they get it. Okay, so other pay and benefit changes, so all other employees in the LEA and the school district received a 2% bonus, a 2% salary adjustment. Couple of points to make is if you read certain sections of the budget, you may have seen the provision for five days of annual leave. That did not, does not apply to school employees, so our folks do not get the five days. Also, another part of the budget, it also said that there was a required minimum pay of $31,200 in the budget. That also does not apply to public schools. So we get some questions on those two things and they specifically exclude public schools in that. The retirement rate went up to 18.86% and hospitalization for the year is 6,104. During the Budget Committee and the Budget Process, we projected those rates about that high and were hoping that they would not be that high, but unfortunately, they were that high and the retirement rate was even a little bit higher than what we projected.
And what was the health rate before?
I believe it's 5869, I believe. It went up significantly.
But that's locked in, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the employee cost went up for health as well, is that correct? Or is it just the employer?
Generally, it does, but we have so many different plans, whether you're single, family, dependents, whether you're on the 70/30, whether you're on the 80. I couldn't tell you what those costs were.
But I guess the teachers have already known that based on open enrollment or is that?
Yes.
And I apologize, so that 6104 is locked in for the year?
For this fiscal year, yes. Okay. The next slide is discussing principal pay increases. The state invested additional $12 million into the new principal salary schedule. Increases principals approximately 6.9% from last year's level, 1718. And you can see the schedule is very similar, the structure is very similar, it's exactly the same as last year. We evaluate a principal whether, on base, whether they've met or whether they've exceeded growth and then based on the number of students they have in their school. And you can see in the chart where the differences for 1718, you can see for a school of 0 to 400 was 61,751 and the new schedule is 66,010.
I'll just ask a question, so for a new school that doesn't have an ADM number, how do we determine?
We would start them on base.
For the benefit of the.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I should wait my turn, I apologize.
No, I'm sorry, my brain just engaged. So for a school like the high school where we're projecting, you know, $1,000 or $1,200, we would start them on, we would start them on base if they were a new principal coming and they didn't have growth data. But your question was ADM and so we would base it on their projected ADM at that school. Sorry.
Can you give us a thumbnail definition of growth for the general public? Maybe that's a complicated question. One time I heard a person say, well, those schools are growing too much. And, no, that's not what we're talking about, we're not talking about.
So let me try, I'm not sure it can be done in a thumbnail sketch.
Growth in this context here.
Because we could probably spend a semester on it, but at the end of the day, there's a secret formula, really, that you don't have access to that predicts to say, this group of students should meet this, and that's a year's worth of growth. And so if they meet what is projected by that formula, they've met, and if they exceed that, they've exceeded at that school.
And that is based off test scores, is that correct?
Yes, on the test, not all test scores, just the ones that they pick to be the predictors. Well, I guess in elementary and middle school, it is most all the scores, but at high school, it's just three tests. So again, it can be, it can be confusing to try to explain it thumbnail, but at the end of the day, there's a formula that's not shared with anyone that predicts what growth should be. If you meet that, you're on that schedule, if you exceed that, you're exceeded.
Now I understand.
But it's not the number of children, it's not that you're at.
It's not population.
It's not population, it's not that you're at 553 now and you grew to 575. That's not the growth we're talking about. That is not the type of growth, correct?
Correct.
ADM on the left-hand side is all about students and how many students are there and then this is all academic growth based on test scores.
More information about the principal pay increase, so this is really just the kind of the details behind it. The principal's placement will be done in January of 2019 based on the following items, so from July to December, principals will be paid according to the 1718 ADM and then schools who are currently leading according to growth scores of schools who led the principal in the 141515. So basically what it says is we're gonna look back for three years at their growth data and two of the three years is where we're gonna place them, okay? So if they had meets, meets, exceeds, they're gonna be meets. If they have exceeds, meets, meets, they're gonna be meets. So we're gonna look at two, we're gonna do, look at three years and we're gonna evaluate them based on two consistent years, okay? And it can be the first and the third year, second, third, it doesn't matter, two of the three years. Okay, and then the next bullet is about the January 1st through June 30th, again, kind of the details and the timing. And then we will hold harmless is extended through the end of the year for fiscal year 1819 and that was a big deal that we wanted to ensure got into the budget because you didn't want a principal to make less this year than they made last year or any year in particular. The hold harmless is not automatically in the budget. So then principals have bonus opportunities. There were two bonus opportunities for principals last year and they consolidated it into the opportunity you see before you in the scale. If you're in the, if your school growth rank is in the top 5% up to the top 50%, you will be eligible for those bonuses. You see to the far right, if your school is an A, B, or C, you get the lower, the lower bonus. And then if you're a D or an F and you had growth, you're gonna receive the higher bonus. Assistant principal pay, assistant principals are basically on an A bachelor schedules plus 19%. They were on an A plus 17% last year, so they got an increase. And we also know that teachers got a significant increase. So if you start with the teacher increase and then you add the 2% from the 17 to 19, that's a very nice increase for our assistant principals. The advanced indoctrinate supplements still apply, whereas for principals, they do not. And the hold harmless clause still applies.
So for assistant principals, even if they got their advanced degree after the 2013 date?
Yes.
They still get their increase?
Yes. Yes. Okay. Okay. And this budget also provided program enhancement teachers. There's been tons of discussion over the last couple of years regarding this allotment. The state allocated $61 million X dollars for that purpose. The allotment ratio is one to 191 students and so we asked, how did you get, where did that allotment ratio come from? And I think they just backed into the numbers. This is the money available, so they backed in. I don't know that we got a, ever got a great answer to that. That is for K5 ADM where that's evaluated and that provides statewide 954 teachers. But remember, that is for four years, well, that's for this year. But this is a phase-in plan where they plan to give us 25% of the teachers each year. So Cabarrus's 25% is 19 teachers.
Okay, so these are additional teachers, but we have to provide the space for them, right?
These are additional teachers, yes, and because of the class size change, we're, we already have these teachers. We do, we have art, PE, you know, all of those, the languages, we have those teachers. The state is now providing the funding for that.
So we have the teacher, in the sense that we did not cut any PE or art or special teachers, so they exist at the school. What's happening now is the state is finally actually giving us a teaching position. What we were doing was pulling those teachers out of the regular teacher allotment. Now the state is saying, over the next four years, we're actually gonna fund those positions outside, that's the difference, which is significant.
Yeah, so we've been having this discussion over the last couple of years, our class size is higher than what the state allocates. And so they wanna know, why is your class size higher than what the state allocates? It's because we have these teachers, right? And the only way to have these teachers is to use what's allocated for that purpose. Well, they want our class size, you know, they're mandating our class size to shrink, to decrease. Well, if you do that, the choice was either do something different with these program enhancement or you fund them. And the state says, well, we want you to have art, music, PE, we want you to have all those things, so we're gonna try to fund them over four years. And so that's what this is. And you can see there what's included in program enhancement teachers. Those are, those are now gonna be coded for reporting to DPI, so they'll know, so the legislator can pull a report and see how many program enhancement teachers we have at any time.
So this is in a way somewhat, on one hand, mandating the reduction in class size for elementary, the early grades, and then giving us these teachers, so we're really just gonna probably shift those teacher positions. So this will cover some expenses, but then we're gonna need them for the early grades growth.
Yeah, I think the simple way to think about it is we're gonna have 19 more teachers allotted to us that we wouldn't have had, that we would've had to pull out somewhere else. So this is the best move by the state on teacher allotments in a long, long time. So it really is a positive. Would've been nice to get them all at one time, but even to get them over four years is significant and a move in the right direction. There's lots of things that aren't moving in the right direction, but this is, this is big.
Yeah, it really is. And, you know, yes, we would like to have all those teachers at one time, but can we hire, you know, I mean, our original estimate was about 95. Could we hire 95 in one year? I don't know, you know, maybe in Cabarrus, but if everybody in the state's competing for those same teachers, I'm not sure that we could. So, you know, the incremental, incremental plan is pretty good.
But as you, excuse me, as you said, we already have them, so we're not hiring additional ones, correct?
Correct, we're not hiring additional arts, music, PE, you know, unless it's a growth position. So, you know, I'll just take the high school for example, so we'll have to hire some art, music, PE for the high school because we're gonna have growth. But are we hiring another one for AT Allen? No, we already have an art, music, and PE at AT Allen. Does that make sense? Okay. So at the end of the four years, we should have accumulated about 76 more teachers by this allotment and obviously that's not guaranteed for the next three years, but if it sticks, then 76 would come to us. This budget allowed for some grants for school safety. I've listed the ones there that were eligible and we can apply for all of those. We've already applied for the SRO grant, we applied for it in February, March, and then we applied for it again, asking for additional SROs so that we'd have a four-time SRO in every single school. I believe we'll be notified in August, is that the time? August 1st, which will be great to know whether we got an additional funding or not.
That's a statewide grant though, right?
It's a statewide grant.
You're competing with other districts.
I'm sorry.
You're competing with other districts for that funding.
We are competing with other districts, you know, there was a 40, about a 41, 42% increase in the funding in that pot. Obviously, there'll be more districts that'll apply, but I feel, you know, without, you know, I feel like I need to knock on wood, but I feel pretty good about our position there. And then the other grants that we're eligible to apply for, you know, in our budget discussions and documents, we asked for some locks, some door locks and we'll apply for these grants and look for ways to do more safety equipment. And then the mental health personnel, those type things, we'll definitely apply for all of those.
And what might be the difference between those two items there about increasing school safety and increasing safety equipment? What's the distinction between those two bullet points?
Which bullet are you? Go ahead.
Personnel training, okay. And the other is equipment itself, okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, and we'll move on to local unless there's other questions regarding the state information. Okay. And so just as a summary, a highlight, I provide this chart for you. We started the 17, or ended the 1718 local budget at $59 million, shown there on the left. Our continuation request was $3.5 million and then our expansion request was $11.5 million. And just to kind of show you where we are, we received funding for $3.7 million of the request, which includes, and I'll go over the details in the next slide with you, but what that is, is all of our continuation items and then nearly $298,000 for supplement increase. Let me just move on to the next slide and we'll talk about the details. So here you can see, this was the detail of the continuation, things like the pay increase, the retirement increase, the hospitalization increase, all of those type things, you know, increase for ADM for instructional supply, technology, maintenance, all of those items. The salary study recommendation, new school funds, the planning for the West Cabarrus High School, and then finally, the the increase for supplements there at $298,000.
And that represents about a quarter percent, right?
It does.
Okay.
It does.
These were our Budget Committee priorities, weren't they?
Yes.
First column there requested is what the Budget Committee of 20, 30 people worked on over three and four, five months.
Yes.
Presented to the county and then the county, for the most part here, has helped us out.
Yes, the continuation items are all of the items except for the final one. And so the continuation are those things that you have to do to continue to operate in the same mode that you're in now, or otherwise, we're gonna have to cut. And so the county was able to fund all of our continuation needs so we don't have to go backwards, which is huge. And then in addition to that, they were able to fund part of our first priority in expansion, so beyond what we are currently doing, at $298,000. We'll move on to capital outlay. Again, a summary of our request and these are kind of broken out into categories. Our five-year request was submitted at $92 million. Our 2018-19 identified needs of that, $92 million, was the $18 million there, I'm sorry, I kind of went into the middle of that. The capital improvement needs that are greater than $500,000 is your $65 million there. Then $18 million of capital projects from facilities and maintenance department. And then of course, your capital projects that are things like school buses and equipment is in that separate category. And so that is your request for $85 million. And then the next column is just breaking down that request even in more detail. And then the final column is what was actually funded. In projects that are greater than $500,000, you have $9,923,000. And again, the next page provides the breakdown and the detail of what was funded. The middle section there, there was $100,000 funded in that section. And then finally, the $1,020, which is generally the standard funding level for that category each year, which means we were funded $11,043,888. So here's the detail that makes up the 11 million. So some of these are related to some construction projects that we already have ongoing, like the contingency for the new PLC, those renovations for J and Fries, then our mobile units. then our mobile units for class size and program enhancement teachers, those HVAC units for J and Fries and Mount Pleasant High, stairwell. That was a high priority in budget committee. County was able to fund that. The Rhino locks that we discussed regarding safety are here. Furniture and equipment for the schools. Four mini-activity buses for the schools, four regular-size activity buses. Replace and repair your school-owned equipment. And then, finally, the Mac Mini servers. And so, that takes you to your eleven million, oh, forty-three. Okay, questions about that? Okay. So, what I'll do next is, if there's not any questions or comments or concerns, we will move forward putting this information in the budget resolution format and present it to you for approval in August. Oh, and I'm sorry, Mr. Harrison mentioned to me, so some of the things that I would highlight in this budget that I think pay increases for all staff were significant for teachers. They were great for our non-certified staff. A two percent is a, is a good raise for those folks. Principal raises, AP raises. So, pay increases for staff, I feel the state did a really good, good job with doing that. As we talked about earlier, those program enhancement teachers, that's a big deal over four years. To have that many teachers flowing into the system is great. And then, another plug, I would say, for the state is their focus on security. Made a lot of efforts to push those grants down and like to be able to see those as reoccurring things and maybe not necessarily apply for them, but they got to start somewhere, and, and there was significant dollars placed in, into safety, and you have to commend them for that.
And I ask you this, we, we role-play every year around this time, because I just want to ask you from your professional perspective to put that into context for us. There's so much in the public sphere that it's hard to discern through who's right and who's wrong. And you've done so, and I appreciate it very much to give me a reference about how the state is moving forward or, or not. I mean, there's times when they, they could not, would not help us out in certain areas, but you're seeing, I don't want to put words in your mouth, are you seeing a positive trend over the last couple of years? Or there are still issues and matters that, I guess I'm asking from the perspective of our legislative agenda. I would, I would like to know how I could interface or interact with our legislators about particular points, but I do want to hear that, what the, the trend or the overall movement is, apart from the political chatter that is so, you know, common.
I feel like there are signi, they're, they're going the correct direction with funding of salaries and positions. My concern would be is the restrictions that they continue to employ just makes it, continually makes it more difficult for LEAs to, to be able to function the way that they need to. So, with every carrot, I get pulled back a little bit, right? So, we're still trying to balance that. If we were funded at an appropriate level, then you, I wouldn't be so concerned about them pulling the flexibility back. But because we're not at an optimal level, we need, we still need that flexibility. But every year, the flexibility is, is pulled away. And the other thing that I would add is, on a positive note, is the timing. The budget, to have the budget timely is really, really important. Like I said, we've already updated our pay schedules. You don't have to retro-pay anybody. Teachers know what they're going to be making, they can see it. All of those things, for you to have, be able to approve a budget in, in July or August versus October or November is just critical. So, I would applaud them for being timely. It's really important.
Your hair was on fire one year when, when they were not, so.
One year?
Sure. Okay, any other questions, comments?
Kelly, now, I know they seem like they did a lot for the principals, and I know we continuously tried to do what we can for the teachers and everything. I know last year, they did some things for the bus drivers. And I, I noticed that I didn't see anything for there, and I know last year, Kelly was pulling her hair out a lot. And I, and, and probably still, I, I, I was wondering if, if it had helped any, or we still needed more help. I know one point I heard thirty-five, or I, I, I don't know, she may can say. How many are we looking at now? We were really in dire straits for trying to get enough bus drivers. And I know that, like I say, we got a little boost, and I know I kind of heard through, I sometime hear through the grapevine, really, what they did still, it was not a lot in us trying to get drivers. And we were begging everywhere we could to try to get drivers. And I'm wondering if this still, I know we keep doing studies and everything, but if this is still another area that we need to keep hammering away, as David said, with our legislators to say, hey, we appreciate it, but still, we need help. I'm just asking.
Certainly, I would say, yes. Continue to tell our legislators we need help in that area. Last year, they did allocate a specific pot of money for bus drivers, and so, they, they received a higher pay increase than, than the normal sort of standard employee, non-certified employee. This year, they also set a separate pot of money for them, but it ended up being the average. So, all of our non-certified employees get two percent, and the money they set aside for the bus drivers is two percent. So, it ended up being the same. So, I guess their intent was good, but it ended up being the same. So, they had a better than average increase last year. They'll have a two percent, which is a pretty good raise this year. And in addition, and I don't know if you remember or not, when we did our salary study locally, we made a decision to go ahead and bump our drivers up locally. And that's important, because when the state gives a raise, then we're the same as, you know, a lot of districts, right? But when we can do something on top of that, that another district can't do, it provides more competitiveness for us, that we can attract and retain those drivers. Certainly, we still need to do more, and we'll continue to work on that, but we have done, we have done some.
How many drivers are we short, oh, excuse me? How many drivers are we short now, Kelly? Can you kind of update us on that?
Sure, we worked on that last week. We are twenty, at this point, twenty-eight drivers short. And the impact on that will be, you'll have to, we'll have to run double runs, and we don't want to do that. That impacts the schools, and certainly, the teachers are having to hold students until the bus comes back. We are doing everything we can to market for those positions, as well as looking at combo positions. Ms. Klutz and Ms. Jones worked with us last year so that we can employ in kids plus and drive an afternoon route, or vice versa, and the same with the school nutrition. So, we do now employ combo positions.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, board members?
I had one that, it sparked a memory. Last year, we had some issue with the early college. We had two of them, and one of them wasn't funded from the state. What did, what does the state do on their budget regarding the early college?
That was interesting, how that happened. So, when we, we had one early college, it was funded with the grant. We added another early college. That early college was approved, but it wasn't funded through the grant. The next year after that, they restructured. And so, we were a, we got a minimum for each early college. So, while it was not funding for the total of the two, wasn't as much as we had the first one, but it helped offset the cuts that we were experiencing just from that transaction.
And this budget continues that funding, or?
It was, it was reduced again this year, but we're still better off than we were the year that we added the second program. So, that decision didn't hurt us that bad.
And Madam Chair, I'd just like to suggest, if we could please consider updating the legislative agenda. I think the last one we had was twenty sixteen, seventeen. But going back through the exercise of collecting local data about our situation here and what we need to operate the schools, to pay the teachers, and, and to have a document that we can, which you worked on, Madam Chair, to, I'm just a document guy. I have to see it written down. I have to know that our data says we need this, and I would appreciate a reconsideration and updating of the legislative agenda at the appropriate time.
Mr. Harrison, let's check with NCSBA when they expect to update. They usually have theirs updated in September, October timeframe, but perhaps we could get some idea before then where they intend to focus over the next year.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
Do we have other, other counties that have, say, two early colleges completely funded? I mean, is that out of the question to have them hundred percent funded, or is that something that's not done?
In this structure, I believe it's something that's not done, not a hundred percent. But we're, again, we're better off than we were when we only had the one early college financially. We're, we're okay. If you're going to fight something, I wouldn't suggest fighting that. I'm just saying, we're better off, I mean, really. Put your focus on bus drivers or something else.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
So, yes, it will be nice to have the budget on our agenda in August, as opposed to October, like we're, we've become accustomed. Okay, so now, we're moving on to the next, I'm in the reports area, and just from my standpoint, I want to thank the teachers who have been wearing the red shirts and coming to experience meetings in person. We had quite a crowd at a couple of meetings, and I know we're in the heart of summer now, so, but we appreciate you being here. The other thing I wanted to mention is, once again, about the Nine School Tools Project with Channel Nine, WSOC. We will be starting our collections August first to the twenty-sixth. All of the locations should be, for Cabarrus County benefits, should be on the website as of tomorrow. I think about eighty percent, ninety percent of them were on. We had a few more to add, which hopefully were added today. So, if you go to nineschooltools.com, there's a map that comes up. You can enlarge it and focus in on Cabarrus County and see where a donation point might be near you. We'll also be having events at a couple of locations. Those will be advertised on Facebook, and I might talk to Ms. Boone if we can't possibly put that on one of our flows on the website, too. Like I said, and everything that is collected in Cabarrus County stays in Cabarrus County. There will not be a postal service collection this year. That's one of the changes. The postal service has decided that they should not solicit from their patrons, so they've decided to stop that. So, all the more, we need to get out and drive with maybe some mini-supply drives, whether they be at businesses or churches, scout troops, and so on. So, we're hoping to be successful and support our students and teachers again. So, that is all. Dr. Lauter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first want to start by welcoming the resource officers. The Embassy Suites today, we had five hundred resource officers from across the state. Their conference is here this week, and we just want to welcome them to Cabarrus County and also say how much we appreciate our relationship with law enforcement and how our SROs at the schools make our schools better, so we appreciate that. Our school nutrition department continues to offer free meals to students this summer. Meals will be provided through August the seventeenth at a variety of locations and mobile sites. Children eighteen and younger are eligible. No identification or reservations are required. You can visit www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us/freesummermeals for a list of all the site locations that, that feed during the summertime. Believe it or not, Wolf Meadow Elementary School's first day of school is July nineteenth next week. The school will host an open house from four-thirty to six-thirty on July sixteenth. Please visit the school's website for additional, additional information. Just about a month from now, students at our early colleges will begin the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. They begin on August the eighth. Schools in the traditional calendar year will open, will host open-house events on August twenty-second and August twenty-third, before heading back to school on August the twenty-seventh. Visit the district website for more information. You can also watch the twenty eighteen Cabarrus County Schools graduation ceremonies at Cabco Schools TV Twenty-One, that's TV, TV channel twenty-one, and on demand on the, on our district's YouTube channel. You can find the television broadcast schedule for each ceremony on our, on the Cabarrus County Schools website. We want to say tonight is Ms. Monroe, Ms. Eileen Monroe's last school board meeting. I see her laughing over there.
She's not dancing, she's just laughing.
We want to say how much we appreciate her service to Cabarrus, Cabarrus County Schools and her time dedicated to our district and to the school board, and most importantly, to our students. So, thank you very much. We will certainly miss you here at Cabarrus County Schools. Now, on the same note, we want to welcome Mindy Abbott, who is here with us tonight. She will be taking over for Ms. Monroe. She's shadowed Ms. Monroe all day today to kind of prepare for this meeting, and then she'll spend two weeks with her at the very end, and then she will be serving and working with us at our next board, board meeting. So, welcome to, Ms. Abbott. We're glad to have you at Cabarrus County Schools.
Okay, so we will move on to our action agenda now. I'm sorry, guest speakers. I'm jumping right by this. Guest speakers are able to speak in accordance with Board Policy twenty-three-ten. A part of each business meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. There's additional information per the policy, based on what is appropriate and not, and we only have one guest speaker tonight, who has shared his comments with us on a few other occasions. So, I know he knows all the rules and will enlighten us during his three minutes. So, Mr. Jim Fulton, if you would come up.
Once again, good evening to the superintendent and members of the board. Hello? Better? Okay. So, thank you very much for, for, for listening, once again. I, I understand that not so long ago, high school seniors were allowed to drive the school buses. So, perhaps that's an option to fill those, those seats, if you really get in a pinch. And, Madam Chair, I, I took you at your word in the last meeting when you said that you understand that the vigorous debate that we've been having over the future of our schools is simply a demonstration of the passion and commitment, concern our community has for the education of its children. And, and I think that's absolutely right, and I, I truly appreciate the sentiment. And I also want to thank you all for the thought and the care that you put into crafting the alternate motion regarding Beverly Hills that was adopted at the, at the last meeting. Appreciate that, and I think there are many others who do as well. There's, there's one omission that I'd like to address, however, and that is a renovation option. I, I think it's appropriate to expand the facility assessment of Beverly Hills to include a renovation option or a renovation in addition option for the school, and ask for more money from the county commission if it's, if it's required to do that. And I, I understand that the chair felt that renovation is a short-term option and may not be economical in the long term, but even a new school will, will require at least one renovation in its lifetime as, as well. So, you build a new school, it's not a free ride for all the thirty or however many years of its, of its life cycle. And then, also, in the last meeting, Mr. Schumaker went to some lengths to defend the maintenance and upkeep of our older schools, but then insisted that Beverly Hills had to be closed because it was in such disrepair. This may be a matter of semantics, as there seems to be a difference between maintenance and capital expenditure. I, I guess that unclogging a toilet is maintenance, but replacing the drain that caused the clog to occur is a capital expenditure, and that these capital expenditures appear in the budget as deferred maintenance, and things like the HVAC replacement for Beverly Hills are part of that. The bottom line, though, is that the work required to keep the school open hasn't been done. And this may be because the county didn't fund those, those capital expenditures, but the fact remains that, that the work wasn't completed, and it's true of McAllister as well. Does that mean my time is almost up? Anyway, but, but I want to thank you once again for the, for the consideration you've given to the, to the future of all our schools. We're all mindful of the budgetary climate that the county operates in, and I want to assure you that I'll support and advocate for any funding initiatives that are intended to support our schools. to support our school, including the sales tax and so on and so forth. So thank you once again very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fulton. We appreciate that. Okay, board members, now we are ready to proceed to the action agenda. First item up is the approval of policies on first reading, and Ms. Reimer and Ms. Burns are here.
Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. We have several policies tonight. To begin, for a PLS recommended update, we have Policy 1310-4002. It changes the wording in subsection B14 to reflect change in statutory language. It makes a minor change to the language in subsection C3 for consistency with statutory language. It updates the legal reference. A district revision to that replaces PEP language with MTSS language. That's just current language that we're using with our students now and updates notifications. We have some district-initiated policies recommended for first read. Policy 3225 is an insert in D stating a student's use of personal devices to access the internet at school subjects... excuse me, the student's internet activity and email communications to monitoring by school personnel is stated in Policy 4318. It inserts a cross-reference and inserts after section E. Policy 4150 is also a district-initiated. It is inserting the following into section D2. Childcare concerns are not considered a hardship for purposes of transfer request accepted in extreme circumstances. Preference or convenience shall not be deemed a hardship. Another recommended change to that policy from our attorneys was also inserted in section G. A transfer or reassignment for one student is not a guarantee, nor does it imply acceptance of a reassignment or transfer for a sibling. Then, Policy 4313, we updated social networking sites examples to be more current, and updated a cross-reference. Policy 4318, we updated the language to say students' use of a personal device to access the internet at schools subjects the student's internet activity and email communications to monitor by school personnel so that that is consistent. Then, committee looked at two more PLS recommended updates. Both of these are currently being done. In section B, it adds circumstances under which the superintendent designee may forego publicizing a vacancy before filling it, and Policy 7240 corrects inconsistency with Policy 7300. Staff responsibilities by adding a requirement that employees notify their supervisor or HR administrator of charge with a drug offense. Policy recommends all of these approved as written.
Okay, so, oh, I want to... I'll walk through the policies. Do you have an overall question, or?
Well, mine's just a general question right now. Has the parents' policy book, has it been printed now?
It is at the printers. It's in the process right now.
I just had... Well, so it has been...
It's in the... We have sent it to the printer. It has been completed.
I just had one question. The thing about process for reporting bullying and harassment, I just wondered if that particular section about how you report bullying and everything could be put in bold red. I am so...
It's in blue now.
And I'm sorry.
You did put it in blue. It is highlighted.
Not just highlighted. I want it in bold red, so parents know where the form is, how they can fill it out, and that it is... and who they need to tell it to. I mean, not just bold, because things can be black. This right here is bold. I know that.
No, this is... It's in blue. It has its own page, and let me just expand just briefly. October is bullying month, and so we're expecting to do some pretty good stuff this year, hopefully even a little more with our parents. So we'll make sure your voice is heard, Ms. Carpenter.
I like red.
We'll do that on the online version.
So much better than blue.
We'll do it on the online version for sure.
But I like red.
Okay.
And I'm just making it known now. I want it in red. It will be, because red will stand out so much better. Blue can be seen. But I just, if it hadn't been printed, I really want it in red.
Yeah, I think...
Because as I'm looking at this page right now, that red stands out. It jumps out at me more than the blue or the green or anything else. But if it hadn't been printed, I would prefer it being in red, because that is the one thing I get, and like I say, where to get it, who to send it to, and that's my main thing. But that's the one thing I have gotten more complaints on than anything. All right.
Okay, well, it sounds like they will check and see where it is, but if it started the print run, it won't be possible. But kind of before we start walking through the policies, I wanted to kind of make a similar note, Ms. Carpenter, as it is so important that parents read the parent handbook. We have so many parents who come in after something disheartening to them has happened with their child, and if they had just read and knew the process to follow, and in every case, they say, yes, I signed the acknowledgement that I received it, but they didn't read the book. They didn't read the information and didn't know how to kind of take care of it in the proper manner, so.
Do we make it in two languages or just one?
Two, Spanish and English.
Yes, and we also have... It'll be a link on our website, and we have the ability to flip it into many languages. Our website does that, of course.
The online version.
Yes.
Can you provide us a copy at the next board meeting, so we have... Oh, the printed copy?
Yeah, we can send... It'll be... It's a soft, I mean, an electronic copy. Yes, we have that.
Okay, so let's start... Look at first at Policy 1310-4002, parental involvement, which were PLS changes. So, board members, any questions on that policy? Okay, so we good to send that one to consent? Okay. I'm sorry. Oh, that's right. Never mind. We're voting tonight. Never mind. Okay, so we're okay on that one, that we will include that in the group. And then, technology responsible use, 3225, 4312, 7320. Any questions on there?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the addition. I'm still not comfortable with the wording in the section G, so I'm not... It's kind of like Carolyn's, I don't know whether...
And which part of G?
As I've said several times, G2, which is on page five of six, where we restrict the use of personal websites, personal email accounts, or personal social media. And again, I just think that they... It should be instead of "may not" show "responsible use," but something without that language or some more restriction in there, but I don't like the language that it is, because my interpretations are numerous teachers that collaborate using their own social media accounts. Yeah, I don't want to restrict that, and I've heard, I know our school system doesn't go after employees, and reassured of that, and I know we don't do that.
Yeah.
But it's just the way my interpretation is. I'm just not comfortable with that.
And I don't know if I share this with you, Rob, but some years ago, my child happened to be this discussion of teachers in public, a group of teachers in public, and I happened to walk up behind them. They didn't know I was there or that I was the parent. So I think we have to be careful. I think we just need to, you know, of what's texted, it could be about a child, and we all know it still happens, but I think we need to have some muscle behind it in the policy, so.
Well, it says have a professional relationship with students at all times. It states that.
Yep. So, Rob, do you want to pull that one out for a separate vote?
Sure.
Okay, any other questions on technology responsible use? Okay, then 4150, school assignment transfers and program choice. And I think this one helps clarify some guidelines for us that we run into some bumps, so that things are not automatically approved and circumstances change and whatnot, so. So any questions on 4150? Okay. What's that?
Just make sure people read the policy before they file the hardship.
Right. 4313, student use of social networking sites. Any questions, comments on that?
Is this the one that takes MySpace out?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Even I know that.
And the good thing is, it does say it is an EG, for example, so it's not a be-all, end-all list.
But next year, there'll be some other technology that we need to assess, or...
Exactly.
It'll change us so much.
But it just addresses in general the use of social media to kind of break school rules in virtual space, so. Okay, so 4313, we'll do as a group. 4318, use of electronic devices. Any questions, discussion on that one? Okay, we'll put that in with the group. 7100, recruitment and selection of school personnel. I think that's a good clarification. Yeah. Any questions, comments? Okay. And lastly, 7240, drug-free and alcohol-free workplace.
So, a general question is, I mean, I know this is a personnel-related, drug-free, alcohol-free workplace policy, but does it parallel pretty much the student policies which prohibit use of paraphernalia? And, I mean, I know there's separate policies for separate audiences, but are we saying the same thing to the two groups, not to use jeweling equipment and stuff of that nature? Are we setting the same types of standards for the adults as we are for the students?
No. This is a policy directly related. If an employee's charged with an offense, they have to notify someone. So this is not necessarily saying what you can or can't do. It's they have to notify their HR.
This is a more stringent policy that applies to employees and also applies to people who operate equipment in buses, and it complies with federal regulations as well from the Department of Transportation. So this is... It's a different policy, and it complies with different regulations. It's more stringent.
Okay.
Okay. And I think that is an important distinction to say "charge" versus a conviction or whatever. Okay, so any further comments, questions, board members? Okay, so I will take a motion to approve all but 7320 on first reading.
Some move, second.
Okay, so Mr. Harrison and Mr. Walter made the motions. Any discussion? All in favor of approving, one, two, three, four, five, these six policies on first reading, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes 5-0. And now we'll vote on the technology responsible use policy, 3225, 4312, 7320. I'll take a motion to approve that on first reading.
Some move?
Okay, so Dr.... Mr. Harrison and Dr. Kirk, any further discussion?
Just to be clear, that I'm okay with this change in that policy.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, I just want to make sure you had the opportunity to vote against it if you wanted to.
I'm gonna vote against it, but the suggested change to that is okay. That's not why I'm voting against this policy.
Okay. All of... In favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that's a 4-1 with Mr. Walter dissenting. Okay, thank you. Next, we have the approval of the annual renewal of computer leases. And, Dr. Probst, do you want to go through the numbers for the board members?
I am.
Okay.
Is this an update?
Yeah, there's a little, I guess, correction on the amounts that are on the agenda.
So, let me start by saying, as cabinet members, we try to get our documents to Ms. Monroe on time and accurate. And starting last week, Ms. Monroe kept saying, "Are you sure this is right? Are you sure this was right?" I think I even got an email on Sunday. "Are you good, Kelly? Are you good?" "Yes, everything's right." "Well, I'm here to tell you that what I'm presenting is not correct." So, Eileen, since this is your last meeting, I'm kind of glad you got to experience this. I would like to say that I'm gonna take my time going through these corrections. There is part of me that thought about pulling this item tonight, but I don't want to do that, because it will affect the beginning or the opening of school. Basically, what happened is there are multiple leases that were floating around, depending on pricing, and we kept going back and forth, and when the documents that you have in board docs are accurate. What is inaccurate are my numbers on the opening page. So in front of you, you have the corrected numbers. Basically, we lowered the Apple lease and increased the Dell lease. So, the Apple lease goes to $2,492,754.96, annual payment of $623,188.74. The Dell lease is accurate, except for there was a typo. It's $1,603,822.30, not $10. At this time, I'm presenting this to you, this is the largest lease that we have had, I don't know, seven or eight years. It is to update staff laptops, which the majority of the staff laptops are between five and six years old. It is to increase the Chrome count. We are moving to a one-to-one in Chrome, second through 12. The first in kindergarten and first grade will go to iPads. We will fully be at a one-to-one with all devices being under four years at this time. We are also including in this, starting to update some of our departments. We've put tremendous emphasis in the last two years on working on the schools and student devices, but we also need to remember, beyond the teachers, we have 2,000 other employees that need technology for their jobs. So we're gonna start updating departments within the education center. At this time, we'll take questions.
Can I have you clarify? So you just said the under four leases for all the devices. Can you say that one more time?
Sure. For students, with this lease, we will have a one-to-one, K through 12, and all devices will be under four years of age, which is what we'd like to get to, is flipping devices every four years for students.
So does that mean all of those devices are on a recurring four-year lease? We're not quite there yet. It just means all computers will be under four years, right?
It means for the 18, 19, everything for students will be four years or less.
But we still are working with the county to get them all on a lease that's recurring, and we're not there yet. So it looks like Ms. Clutz is gonna clarify that.
So, this is the year that we had that influx, right? So we're able to purchase a significant amount of devices this year. Well, next year, that amount goes down. So we're not gonna be able to hold the trend. So we're here this year. Next year, we're gonna lose some pace. The next year, we're gonna lose a little bit more, then we're gonna pop back up.
But this was in the budget, and the county knew it was coming, and they've already proved...
Yes.
Yeah, that was one of the reasons I want to clarify, because we're working with the county for their benefit and ours, for everything to be under a lease. So rather than when we open up a new school, buying devices, you're just... We're buying enough devices for new students and putting on a lease. So we're getting there, but we're not quite there. I just want to make sure.
Well, I just don't want you to think it's gonna continue. We're gonna go down a little bit, then we're gonna pop back up.
So one of the four years, we're gonna have a higher dollar amount?
Yes. Okay. And we're on a four-year lease cycle now as well?
Yeah, we switched it. Previously, we've always been on a three-year lease, but because money's tight, we don't have enough, and we're not flipping them any sooner than four years. We felt it was appropriate to go ahead and go four years, and that seemed to be a good decision.
Once you achieve one-to-one, you can do that. But you've got to get to one-to-one first. Yeah. Okay, and I have a question about, I don't know how many old, really old computers are still sitting in classrooms or libraries. Are those being taken out now?
So, here's our plan for that. What we want to do is get the new devices in, and then Michael and I are going to meet with each ITF and principal and go through the inventory. We want to make sure that they have every curricular aspect covered, but there will be a heck of a lot coming out, especially things that are six-plus years old. The interesting thing on that, we've already had some quotes, especially on the Apple equipment. The residual could be up anywhere to $250 to $300, depending on the device, and then we will put that money back into the schools, and we do have a local buyer.
And that work involves adjusting the software leases and the software licensing as well, so that we are not paying licenses while we...
You mean as, when, as we take things out? Generally speaking, most of our software's licensed, what they call for FTE, full-time employees. It doesn't really have anything to do with the number of devices. We're licensed for everything we have.
So we're only concerned about pulling the hardware?
Hardware, yes.
Without continuing to incur the expenses of software on that hardware?
That's right.
Yeah, we were even surprised on the iPads that don't carry the iOS 11, that we weren't getting $30 to $40 on a device that won't carry... that we weren't getting thirty to forty dollars on a device that won't carry the software that, that we run, and that's what they were offering. So, we do think we'll get quite a bit of money back on what we sell.
Okay. And I'm just thinking about, you know, the physical space with a Chromebook or an iPad. It's a lot less desk table space. It's not occupying two or three tables in a classroom. Yeah, you have a cart, but that's at least somewhat movable or more accommodating than those, one student takes up this much space, so...
Our idea is when we get this money back from the devices we're selling, is to use that to buy nice cases for those iPads, so the schools don't have that burden.
Just a question of how are we doing with the pricing on these things? Are we getting a good deal, or can I go out and buy, buy a similar thing for...
I've been working on them on that. They've done very well, actually.
The volume is so high, so the numbers came down. Now, on the Chromes, at a two hundred and fifty-nine-dollar device, there's not much of a margin, but on the other devices, we got very good pricing because of our volume.
Board members will take a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve these leases.
Approve the annual Apple and Dell computer leasing. That's Mr. Walter.
I'll second it.
And Ms. Carpenter, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes five-zero. Thank you. And thank you for answering. Email's Kelly on your vacation.
Okay.
Okay, next, we have Agenda Item six point oh three, approval of West Cabarrus High School change orders, number six and seven.
Good evening, board members. I'm here, here tonight to ask for your approval on two change orders that have been presented to us by Branch and Associates, the contractor on our West Cabarrus High School project. Change order number zero-zero-six is for the acceptance of the post-bid alternate number one, the third-floor build-out, which was included as a part of the original bid package. The total cost for this change is in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Change order number zero-zero-seven are the changes made to the original bid documents after the final review was completed and approved by the City of Concord. Additional grading, internal roadway improvements, and the upsized water line for capacity are items that are part of this change. The total negotiated value of this change is in the amount of three hundred, ninety-five thousand dollars, seven hundred and eighty-one, and forty-one cents. Both of these change order requests are covered by the previously, previously-approved use of contingency funds by the Cabarrus County Commissioners and the Board of Education.
And board members, I will send you a total, 'cause I was getting lost in the numbers, so Brian sent a spreadsheet. That is just the change order one through seven, and it shows the subtractions or additions, as the case may be.
Right.
So, I think that'll be helpful going forward to see, 'cause I think there would be plenty more change orders, even if they're for small amounts or, or zero-dollar ones, but just to keep track of them, so...
And was your last statement in layman's terms that we're not gonna ask the county for additional funds for these two change orders?
For these two changes, no, sir, we will not be.
So, we've already...
We've already captured that.
Gotten the appropriate funding to cover these items?
Yes.
These are not net new requests to the county?
Correct.
Okay.
Explain the first, explain the first one again about the build-out of the third floor. Did we approve the bid with the alternate included?
So, we, we did approve the bid of the alternate, but in order to be able to fund the alternate, we had to go, and when you look at the spreadsheet that Ms. Furtinbaugh's referring to, you'll see we had to go through a value engineering exercise, and we had to capture enough money so that we felt like we could afford that alternate. So, that was done on the front end, and those are previously-approved change orders.
So, we valued engineer to get this num, get that dollar number?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
The county asked us not, they did not want to fund the extra hundred and fifty thousand dollars and asked us to find ways within the existing bid to do so, and we were able to bang it out about nine hundred and...
Is that what all the, that's what all the other stuff, the cross, crossouts and what have you?
Yes, sir.
Correct, yes. Well, you're looking at the bid form, I guess, aren't you?
I'm looking at what's on board docs here. You know, a lot of crossouts of things and deducts and...
Again, once you see the spreadsheet with the summary of all the change orders and how they were captured, it'll help to explain where this falls.
I just hit send if you haven't had email open.
And Mr. Walters, we also held this eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars till now, 'cause we didn't necessarily, it wasn't necessarily start until now, because we want to make sure that we got off the site without having a whole lot of major issues. Again, more with soul, you know, before we spent eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, without going back to county asking for more money.
Would it be possible to vote on this after the closed session, so I have time to review it, the spreadsheet?
Yeah, it's real quick. It's not any words, it's just a list. So, if you want to open it, you can see, starting with the original contract bid, our contract amount, and then you'll see he brings the total of the value back up to the top. Can you bring it up if I send it to you, Michael?
Yeah.
So, do you have it up, Brian, that you can walk through it?
Yes.
Or I can walk through it?
So, so, Mr. Walters, if you look on the left-hand column there, the, the change order numbers, that's, the first one was the, was the unsuitables that we dealt with on the very front end of the project, a lot of groundwater issues. The next change order number zero-zero-two, that's reflective of the value engineering exercise, but we captured a credit of nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars.
Can you go through that exercise? What, what, what did we get out to get that amount?
That's a, that's a little bit longer exercise. There's several pages long worth of...
I mean, how about the big, the big items? I mean, the...
I could provide that to you. I mean, I could send you the entire spreadsheet, which would probably be much better than me trying to go through it right now. Okay? So, then, we go down to change order zero-zero-three. Again, more unsuitable soil, and that's when we had to import a considerable amount of fill material for the south parking lot. Zero-zero-four was some additional value engineering items that we are able to capture in the project. I believe those were some canopy modifications that we worked with the design consultants on. Zero-zero-five was for construction today. There's no dollar value change there, but it is a, it is a recognizable change order that we, we signed and approved. Zero-zero-six, obviously, which is for the third-floor build-out, that's the one that I have before you tonight for the eight hundred and fifty-one. And then zero-zero-seven are the plan revisions per the approved permit set there on the last item.
And that has to do with the water line, the road expansion on the back end into Laurel Park?
Correct. So, so, we, because of the time constraints on the project, we were able to receive a, a early grading permit from the City of Concord prior to the final documents being...
Yeah, I think I, I, I kinda understand where that is. I don't quite understand where we came up with the, how we were funding the eight hundred and fifty-one thousands. How many additional seats do we get with the third floor?
And I think that's just, the county wanted us to do that. And that's, this is just the recording of it. It was long ago, agreed to.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I remember that, remember part of that discussion. How many additional seats do we get with the third floor build-out?
Two hundred and fifty. Went from sixteen hundred to eighteen fifty.
So, the, the number that I like is, these seem like such big numbers, but when you look at the total project, and you look at the contract changes, actually a net of one point four-seven percent.
Yes, ma'am.
Which, when you're thinking about the big numbers and the large site it is.
And it's a continual exercise to go through and try to capture value engineering items as we can and not impact the overall design of the school.
Yeah, that's what the concern is, of whether we're actually giving up to, to do this project, that part of the project.
Right.
And just to segue off Ms. Furtinbaugh's comment, one point four-seven is pretty accurate. And, I mean, is, is...
Yes, sir.
In, in the world y'all live in, that's a good variance.
Anything under ten percent is really good.
Especially in today's market.
Correct.
Yeah, Ms. Carpenter's asking about if we still have contingency money left, and I believe we do.
We do, yes, ma'am.
So, can I ask a slightly different question? How are we doing on the schedule of opening the high school, please?
I think we're gonna wait and address that in August, David.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will we have better data and more accurate?
Yes, correct.
Excellent. I'll wait till that time to hear that report. Thank you.
We're having too good of a night.
The weather. Things out of our control. Thank you.
Okay, so you're gonna send us this spreadsheet that has this...
I will, the value engineering?
Yes.
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay.
Okay.
Cindy, if it's okay, I'll forward it to you and let you share it with them. Is that okay?
That's fine, yeah. Or you can send it to everybody at once, either way.
Okay.
So, I'll take a motion that the board approve change order number six in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, and change order number seven in the amount of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one, and forty-one cents for West Cabarrus High School as presented.
So, move?
Okay, so, Dr. Kirk made the motion, Mr. Harrison seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes five-zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And does Ms. Monroe have the papers for me to sign tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Three copies each.
Oh, goodie. I saw her folder look thick, that's why. Okay, next, we have Agenda Item six point oh four, the approval of a board member travel to NCSBA Fall Law Conference, and that is one where the hotels always run out quickly. So, Ms. Carpenter has requested to participate. Oh, you're going to?
Yes, please.
I don't think that's in here yet, though, is it? Um, 'cause we'd rather get it approved. Okay, so, let's look.
So, do we need to make a motion, add David to this, too?
Uh, yeah, let me see what...
The motion's broad enough that you don't need to do that.
She was gonna get kind of a blanket, so we could go ahead and...
Yeah, but we need to know, like, who's going. We're not approving, you know, more than who's going.
Okay.
So, the board members made time.
Okay, so, Mr. Harrison and Ms. Carpenter, are you thinking about going, Mr. Walter? Okay. Okay, so, we will add or include, by implication, Mr. Harrison's travel as well. So, I'll take a motion that the board approve board member attendance for Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Harrison at the NCSBA Fall Law Conference, October seventeenth to nineteenth.
And I'll make that motion with the caveat that you make a report when you get back to the board.
Ah, sure, well, would you like your report?
I will second that.
Those are the best conferences, they're so interesting.
I'll second it.
And Dr. Kirk is seconding. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, five-zero. Thank you. And at this time, the board would like to approve a board resolution, so we won't read it yet, but board members, you have it in front of you. It's a resolution of appreciation, and we'll do this in a moment. But board members, having the information in front of you, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution.
The resolution?
Aye.
Okay, can we all second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes five-zero, and now, board members, we will take our placements. Can Ms. Monroe, join us, Tom, right?
Green line, green line.
And I hope you know how much this takes to organize. So, Ms. Carpenter will start?
I get to start, and you know how I like to run my mouth. Ms. Monroe, I have a wonderful plaque here, and it says to Eileen Monroe, Board Clerk, in recognition and profound, profound appreciation of distinguished service to Cabarrus County Schools, presented by Cabarrus County Board of Education, July the ninth, twenty eighteen. This plaque cannot tell how much we appreciate you for all the work you have done for us. You have been an outstanding clerk. We appreciate, we know how many times you have done and gone beyond the call of duty for us, and we appreciate it so, so much, we can't tell. We know the days that the phone has rang off the hook, and parents have called you for all these hearings you've had to set up. When you try to arrange a schedule for seven board members, plus a superintendent, and try to get our, our, all our, you know, get us all arranged, I know that has to drive you crazy. And all, meanwhile, trying to answer the phone and trying to calm down the parents, we know how, it, it is really nerve-wracking. But we want to give you this plaque, just a little appreciation for all you have done for us.
And now, Ms. Monroe, Dr. Kirk and I will read the resolution that we just approved without you knowing. This is a resolution of appreciation. On this ninth day of July in the year twenty eighteen, the Cabarrus County Board of Education brings forward the following resolution. Whereas the board clerk provides a critical role in supporting the Cabarrus County Board of Education, whereas the board clerk organizes and schedules the board's training and travel, as was just noted, whereas the board clerk tracks the board's training and travel budget, whereas the board clerk maintains the master board calendar of meetings and events, whereas the board clerk attends every work session, business meeting, specially-called meeting, hearings, and grievances, whereas the board clerk efficiently and accurately prepares the minutes of each board meeting.
Whereas the board clerk manages the contact the board email box, whereas the board clerk handles board communications from parents and the public, whereas the board clerk maintains the records of the board as a historical view of board decisions, whereas the board clerk sometimes needs to herd cats while supporting the activities of the board, be it hereby resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Education recognizes Board Clerk, Eileen Monroe, for her dedicated service from two thousand and eight to twenty eighteen, and wishes her well in her retirement.
were busy with Mindy, so that we had time to get ourselves organized before the meeting. Oops. Okay, board members, we are now ready to go into closed session. A call for motion to convene a closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven eighty-three, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged, and to consider the pending case of the Cabarrus County Board of Education versus trustees of the teachers and state employees' retirement system in pursuit to General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven eighty-six, to continue the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer employee or prospective public officer employee, or to hear or investigate complaint, charge, or grievance. to hear or investigate complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer employee to review personnel recommendations.
So move.
Second.
So Dr. Kirk, and we'll give that to Carolyn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes 5-0. And thank you for all those who are attending here, and Ms. Monroe, hurrah for your last meeting with us.
You're gonna miss us.
And thank you to our viewing public. Good evening.